Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond, Tara Franco. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, I want to start this meeting by thanking one of our members who is going to be resigning at the end of this month. So, thank you to Tara for all of your years of service on this board. It's really, this board has been functioning so smoothly, it's really nice that, you know, when we all work together, so. We wish you well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so on our agenda, we do not have any action on items, well, we're going to have to open the public hearing, but there's no new information on item number four, and then there's no, no action at all on items number seven or number nine. We do have one set, well, let me just say there's, our upcoming meetings are going to be Tuesday, June 25th, and Tuesday, July 23rd, and we have one set of minutes to approve with some amendments, like adding somebody's last name.
I hope it was done. Okay, great.
Yeah, Pam had said she was going to take care of that today, so.
So moved. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, I wasn't here at the last meeting.
I also abstain.
Yeah, so we have two extensions, because... Okay, so we do have a decision on three different appeals, and then we have a couple of public hearings, and then reviews. So, the public hearings are the opportunity, the board has already seen these applications, but it's the opportunity for neighbors to comment on them. The reviews are generally the first time we're seeing the applications, so those are not open at this time to public comment, but will be at the appropriate time. So, we're going to start with the decision. So, appeal numbers three-
It was a closed and reserved decision.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's part of the record.
Okay, yeah, this one, this one, we've already held a public hearing on, and so this is item number one, two, and three. Appeal numbers three eight eight six, three eight eight seven, and three eight eight eight. Joanne Morgan and Fred Pina requested variance for a camper to be parked in their front yard pursuant to Section 194-52.1 of the zoning ordinance, a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot fence which is located in front of the front line of the house, a three-foot front line variance for the existing house, and a three-foot front line variance for an existing above-ground pool which is one foot in front of the front line of the house pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations in Section 194-98 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. And to shed under 144 square feet in size remain located in front of the house pursuant to Section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance, the location Two Kane Drive. Whereas the applicants have requested for collectively the requested variances, the three appeals that I just mentioned, whereas this is a type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, seeking pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C17 with no review pursuant to seeker required at this time, whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on March 13th, 2019, whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on March 26th, 2019, whereas the ZBA finds that the applicant's property is located at Two Kane Drive, which is a corner lot located at the intersection of Lee Town Road and Kane Drive. The applicants received an interpretation from the ZBA on March 27th, 2018. The 2018 decision in order stated that the lot in question has two front yards, each requiring a 50-foot setback, in this case from Kane Drive and Lee Town Road. And while no request for a variance of the required setbacks has been made, it can be noted that construction and other uses on the premises violates the required setbacks. The following building permits relevant to the requested variances were issued for the property. One, on June 7th, 2004, building permit 25349 was issued for an 18-foot above-ground pool which expired on June 7th, 2005. Two, on October 8th, 2014, A, building permit 34526 was issued for a 24-foot above-ground pool which expired on October 8th, 2015. B, building permit 34530 was issued for a six-foot as-built fence in the rear yard which expired on October 8th, 2015. On August 14th, 2018, complaint number 2018-22 was issued for pools, fences, and sheds being erected without proper permits and/or required variances. This complaint and the subsequent order and remedy violation were the impetus for the variances that the applicants have requested. Despite being advised of the need for permits and variances, the property owner continued work disregarding needed compliance with the zoning ordinance. After the applicant's initial presentation, it became clear that a landscaping plan would be important to determine if any of the visual impacts created by the requested variances could be screened and mitigated. The ZBA requested a landscaping plan from the applicants at the September 25th, 2018 meeting. The applicants did not submit a sufficient landscaping plan prior to the October 23rd, 2018 meeting. At the October 23rd, 2018 meeting, Chairperson Drummond notified the applicants that the ZBA was still waiting for a landscaping plan. At the next meeting that the applicants attended, the February 26th, 2019 meeting, the applicants and their attorney were reminded that the ZBA had requested a landscaping plan, but it's still not received one. Mr. Pina represented the applicants could present a landscaping plan should a public hearing be scheduled for the March 26th, 2019 ZBA meeting. Despite the applicants failing to provide the requested landscaping plan on multiple occasions, the ZBA voted in favor of scheduling a public hearing for the March 26th, 2019 ZBA meeting. The ZBA held a public hearing for the variances at its March 26th, 2019 meeting. Chairperson Drummond reminded the applicants that the ZBA had been waiting for a landscaping plan. Instead of receiving a landscaping plan that was signed and sealed by a design professional, the applicants provided a proposal letter and a hard copy, hard-colored copy of a survey with a handwritten key. This purported plan was insufficient, did not meet the design standards of a professional landscape architect or engineer, and was not what has been requested by the ZBA. After an indepth discussion regarding the lack of a sufficient landscaping plan and the importance of screening, Chairperson Drummond read letters of support for the applicant into the record and also heard from the applicant's neighbors at the public hearing who were there in support of the applicants. The public hearing was closed on March 26th, 2019. At the conclusion of the public hearing, Chairperson Drummond notified the applicants that the ZBA had 62 days to make a decision. Now, therefore, as a result of the foregoing, the decision in order of the Zoning Board of Appeals is as follows. The ZBA grants the applicant's request for a variance to allow a camper to be parked in their front yard. Two, the ZBA grants the applicant's request for a three-foot front line variance for the existing house. Three, the ZBA grants the applicant's request for a three-foot front line variance for an existing above-ground pool which is one foot in front of the front line of the house. Four, the ZBA grants the applicant's request for a variance to allow a shed under 144 square feet in size remain located in front of the house upon the condition that said shed is repainted the same color as the side of the house facing it within 90 days. And five, the ZBA denies the applicant's request for a two-foot variance for an existing five-foot, for an existing six-foot fence which is located in front of the front line of the house for the following reasons. A, there will be an undesirable change to the neighborhood. There is currently a six-foot-high fence on an approximately four-foot wall in a front yard creating the appearance of a 10-foot-high fence in a front yard. B, the benefit of privacy can be achieved by another method. The applicant can install a four-foot privacy fence. In addition, landscaping larger than four feet high can be erected to shield the applicants when using their pool. The applicants were afforded multiple opportunities to provide a landscaping plan that could have helped mitigate the high visibility of this fence, and they chose to not provide such plan. The applicant, C, the variance is substantial. The applicants are requesting a six-foot fence when only a four-foot fence is permitted pursuant to zoning ordinance. This equates to the applicants requesting a variance of 50%, which is substantial. In addition, the six-foot-high fence is located on an approximately four-foot wall which creates the appearance of a fence that is approximately 10 feet high. In addition, the applicants are requesting for the six-foot fence to be over 20 feet toward the front line of the property to grant themselves an extensive patio around their pool. This patio could be, could have been substantially limited to minimize the visibility of the fence and its proximity to the road. Did the applicant's harm was self-created. They built a patio and retaining wall around their above-ground pool which then necessitated a fence. They also erected the six-foot fence in a front yard without first consulting with the building department and obtaining the required permits. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right. There's one typo correction on there, Pam, for you to know. Okay, so we are now going to move on to item number four, which is an adjourned public hearing. I do need a motion to open this. This is Appeal 3882, Klaus Garage Inc., Dave Lawrence, owner of Klaus Garage Inc., 2619 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use, an interpretation of automotive service facility and used car sales, as well as a variance of the 100-foot requirement on Route 52 in order to continue the outside display of cars pursuant to Section 194-3, 194-16, 194-86, 194-116, and Node 11 of the zoning ordinance.
So moved.
Thank you. Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So again, we did get an email today from Klaus Garage that they have, they are still pursuing some information, but there is no new information at this time, so they wished to, they requested that the board adjourn this until our June meeting.
You want to do it through a June meeting, or do you want to do it another, because it's been going on for almost like six months now?
Well, I think what we can do is direct the clerk to send a letter following up this meeting. I think we have to grant their request because it's not unreasonable.
Yeah, and you look at-
I have no problem with 30 days, but I was going to go for 60 days.
Oh, you wanted to extend them, give them more time so it's not on the agenda? I don't want to do that.
I don't want to do that because there's an issue related to them filing an application to do something on their property.
Okay, so 30 days is fine.
So.
I'm fine.
All right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Klaus Garage Inc.? So, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing, sorry, to adjourn it to June?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good, so that's taken care of. Item number five, Appeal 3900, McGimsey, Thomas McGimsey, 49 Wright Boulevard, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed eight-foot-by-20-foot pool deck extension and a five-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment, a one-foot sideline variance for an existing above-ground pool, and a six-foot rear line variance and eight-foot sideline variance for an existing jungle gym pursuant to Sections 194-94 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so last month, we did have the opportunity to review your application with you and your appeal with you. I hope you're thankful we did get that survey updated because it did show that the pool was that one foot, you know, or a little bit less than that, one foot closer, just, it just had that appearance to it, so better to resolve it. So, you do have an existing pool that's been installed, you did it with all the appropriate permits, it has a deck on the one side of it, you're now asking to be able to put like a slightly wraparound deck on the other side, which really is just going to maximize your ability because it's above-ground, to put some chairs up there, a little table, storage box, things of sort for you guys to better enjoy the pool. We really, and when we were reviewing your survey, we noticed that the jungle gym equipment was a little closer than where it should have been, but again, we said we could address that. Your neighbor, you mentioned, didn't have any objections because he had a similar situation, but that aside, so, you know, so we said, let's take it to public hearing and let's go through. Apparently, the slope of your property is such that this is really one of the few locations on your property where you could put this anyway.
Yeah, the slope and the leach fields and subject, I guess.
So, so again, because of the minimum request of the variance that, we actually talked with you about shrinking that deck a little bit, but really for you to be able to use it in any decent manner, it kind of has to be the size that you're requesting. So, anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing other than, you know, if they're speaking with more of a neighbors, no one seems to have any kind of issue with what we're trying to do.
Okay, well, if any of them came tonight, we can clear that. Any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for the appeal of Thomas McGimsey, 42 Wright Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a number of variances related to his pool and jungle gym? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, this is Appeal 3900 for Thomas McGimsey, for a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed eight-foot-by-20-foot pool deck extension, a five-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment, a one-foot sideline variance for an existing above-ground pool, and a six-foot rear line, and an eight-foot sideline variance for an existing jungle gym pursuant to Sections 194-94 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. This is at 42 Wright Boulevard, and this is, the resolution is offered by Zoning Board Member Mary Seminera. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variances, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals moves to adopt their standard decision in order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means because the land on the opposite side of the pool is close to the septic fields, the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the above-stated variances.
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, your motion carries, you're all set. Now, you just deal with the building department. Okay?
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, item number six, Appeal 3901, Hearthshorn, Catherine Hearthshorn, 843 Farmers Mills Road. Carmel is requesting an area variance of .42 acres for lot count calculation in order to subdivide a 7.81 acre parcel of land which is zoned B-1R-3 that she owns at 3875 Route 52 into two lots, one of which is proposed to be 3.23 acres and the other is proposed to be 4.58 acres. A 6.65 acre area variance to be, for the buildable area for Lot 2, a 13-foot width variance for the width of the flagpole pursuant to Section 163-19C1, 163-19H1, and 194-92.1 of the East Fishkill Code. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tongue twisters tonight.
Good evening, I'm John Watson from Insight Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture, PC, here with Kathy Hearthshorn, the applicant. I like to try to keep this brief, there's a lot of history on the property. I'd just like to quickly bring you up to date as-
Excuse me, the, one of the member on the end can't see it. Is there some reason you're not putting it over in the front here where it usually goes?
It's a public hearing, right?
Okay.
If you just turn it a little bit, if you left it-
Yeah, just give it a little bit more of an angle than where you were, we could work with that then.
Is that okay?
Well, people want to come up, why don't you put it back where it was, but just angle a little bit? Because people want to come up to the dais, they won't be able to give up yet.
It's the same place, but just twisted.
I'll just turn it, there you go.
There you go, thank you.
We're happy now.
Great. Do I need to talk in the mic, or can I stand around?
You need to talk in the mic.
All right. So-
You can move the back a foot if that would help you to be able to speak to it.
I'm just trying to get everybody, sorry. Okay, so the prop, as I mentioned, the Hearthshorns are looking to build a residence on their existing property. It's a 7.8 acre property. They've had the property for many years, they bought it because it is, got a existing building in the front. They were looking to develop it or redevelop it as some type of commercial or business use. Based on the location, they were not able to successfully get that to happen. So, what they've done is they keep the front as a rental house, residential, and the property is split-zoned. It's a B1 zone in the front, R3 residential in the back. They currently live in the town of Kent, and both Kathy and George, both husband and wife, their families have had properties in East Fishkill and Kent for many decades. They currently live in Kent, they're looking to move to East Fishkill. So, they want to move their property to here. And what we want to do is keep the existing house up front and put a new house in the back. What I'd like to do is quickly just walk you through a couple pictures that we've brought. This is their existing house. I know there's been some concern about the project and their large garage. So, what we want to try to do is explain why they want such a large garage on the property. Kathy's husband, George, is a paving contractor, so he has a lot of commercial equipment, paving equipment. So, they used to keep all of this at their residence. So, what they've done is about five years ago, they built a commercial building in Kent. And what they've done is they've moved all of their commercial equipment and the paving equipment to this building. It's on Luddington Hill Road, town of Kent, just built a building. They operate the back half of the building, they have a tenant in the front. And what they do is they have all of their paving equipment in the back, a lot of outdoor storage, and then they have it inside, they've got all of their shop and repairs are inside the building. So, it's a dedicated building for all of their paving equipment. Their existing house, which is in the town of Kent, is typical, single-family residential house. They don't keep any of their paving or commercial equipment around their house. It's a, you know, they have a nice paved driveway, cobblestone curb, nice lawn, manicured landscape lawns, but they do have a very large family and a lot of vehicles. Both Kathy and George love to restore and collect antique and classic vehicles. So, that is the reason for the large garage. Here are pictures of just some of their vehicles, and most of them, they've restored themselves. And right now, they just have, they need a lot of storage space. Any of you who have older cars or any cars, you know, it's preferable to keep them inside, shielded from the weather and the rain. What they're looking to do is keep all of these vehicles on their property so they can use their vehicles when they want, and they're properly sheltered. So, what we're looking to do on their property is build a house towards the back of the property. You can have an attached garage, they also have a motor, a big RV, so they'd also like to keep that inside. They want to get away from keeping all of their cars outside, keep everything, keep all the clutter hidden. So, what they've done is an attached garage, what they've done is architecturally have them connected, but not in a big straight line, so it doesn't look like one big mass building. And the way the property is situated, as I mentioned, it's almost eight acres. The, everything is situated in the back of the property. I drove by here on the way to the meeting today, you can't see more than 200 feet in past this from Route 52. So, everything will be shielded, so even though it's a larger garage, it'll still be shielded from the road. You know, we don't expect any issues with this. I know, as I mentioned, there's some concern about the commercial vehicles. And we talked to the Hearthshorns, they'd be happy to put any type of restrictive notes on the plans as far as, you know, not servicing commercial vehicles on site, not keeping any heavy equipment on site. You know, we, this is truly just a residential garage. So, we would like, you know, we'd be happy to consider, you know, similar types of notes restricting this.
How much of the site is wetlands, for the record? Because that's the reason that you're locked into this really wacky kind of design here.
Right.
Because the right portion of the property is a significant amount of wetlands and that you can't build in.
Right, there's 2.2 acres of wetlands on the 7.81.
Right, which is why you need a variance for the buildable area. Because when you subtract the wetlands from the formula, you don't really have, you only have the half of the additional lot that you really need.
Yep, I just wanted to give context of what we're doing, why. Here's an aerial picture which shows context of the proposed property to all of the neighbors. We do think this is not out of, out of character with any of the neighborhood. We have Route 52 here, we have Route 84 in the back. This is all estate DEC wetland. This is the wetland that you mentioned, Norma, is all along here, so about, about 20% of the property is wetland. And then there's also DEC wetland buffer. We've been able to keep this project designed, so we're completely out of the buffer. But you're right, based on the code, when you do your lot count calculation, when you count the wetland and the wetland buffer, that takes away from the buildable area.
How much of it was wetland, 2. what?
2.15 acres.
Of 7.81, so it's actually more than 25%. 2-point acres of 20% would be a 10-acre site. Okay, so, take us through the variances because there was some discussion at the last meeting. At the last meeting, you were requesting an eight-foot variance because you were putting the driveway two feet, within two feet of the existing house. And we were like, that's, we were not expecting, we're not, we had commented that that was not necessarily appropriate.
So, we did change that.
It doesn't put any place for snow storage. Literally, the people can't, who would be in that house at some point, if that lot is sold separately, they would not be able to put a ladder up to be able to do any kind of repairs to the house.
We took that, we heard your comments, we came back, we came back with a moving that property line to 10 feet off.
Okay.
So, that's, so the recent-
So, instead of the 50-foot pole, now you're going to have a-
37. 37-foot pole.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Thank you guys for having us. My name is Frank Smith III, and I'm with the Law Office of William Schilling, who represents the applicant. If it's okay with you, I would like to go through and explain our project a little bit. And if you have questions at the end, I'd be more than happy to answer them to the best of our ability. So, as Mr. Watson had mentioned, the applicant had purchased the property in 2000-
Can you put the microphone back over, thank you.
I'm sorry. The applicant purchased the property in 2004 and sought to develop it commercially, after spending thousands of dollars and realizing that that may not prove fruitful. They purchased the property in the town of Kent, and they developed that commercially in order to store their family business. So, this evening, we come before you, and the relief we're requesting is in the form of three area variances. The first is for lot count, as you know, you require two, and we're seeking to provide 1.58, which requires a variance of .42 lots. Second is for buildable area on a flag lot. The code requires four and a half acres, we're seeking to provide 3.85, requiring a .65 acre area variance. And the third is for flagpole width, the code requires 50 feet, and we're seeking to provide 37 feet, requiring an area variance of 13 feet. As you know, in determining an area variance, there are five factors to consider when weighing the benefits to the applicant against the potential detriment of the neighborhood. The first is whether or not it would be detrimental to the neighborhood or to surrounding properties. And in this case, there would be no detriment. The proposed construction is high-quality residential, and it would utilize the more restrictive of the two zones that are over the property. Second is that the need for the variances cannot be obviated any further. As you guys know, we've been before this board before, and I think we've taken your comments and suggestions to heart. We've been able to eliminate a proposed easement. We have absolutely no impact on the watershed area. And by increasing the variance needed for the flagpole width, we have gotten rid of the fourth variance that we were looking for for side yard setback of the existing structure. The third prong is whether granting the variance would create an adverse environmental impact. And this is something that Mr. Watson can speak to more specifically than I can. But given the location and layout of the project now, there'd be very, very minimal, if any, environmental impacts that would negatively affect the area. And it should also be noted that because it is a split zone with two uses, the residential zone is more restrictive than the B1 business zone. The fourth consideration is whether the variances are substantial. For buildable area, the .65 acre variance gives us 85.6% compliance with the code. The variance for lot count of .42 lots, that gives us 79% compliance with the code. The third is for flagpole width, and that is 13 feet, and that also gives us 74% compliance with the code. I think it is important to note, as we said, that by increasing that requested variance, we've eliminated the need for the side yard variance that we were initially looking to do for the existing structure. I'd also like to point out that for a shared driveway in the town of East Fishkill, 16-foot width is required, and we provide at least 18 feet. I know in past meetings that there were concerns about site distance and being able to maneuver vehicles in and out of the first lot, and I believe that that covers that concern. Because of the split-zone designation and the commercial development being unable to be realized, the proposed development would utilize the more restrictive of the two zones, and we believe that in coming back and meeting with the board, that we've incorporated your considerations and thoughts to provide the most minimum area variances necessary in this regard. So, with that being said, we do think that by reducing, removing the easement, reducing the amount of variances from four to three, and also providing very minimal, minimal, if any, impacts on the environmental area around, that we meet the five factors that are to be considered when deciding to grant an area variance. And we thank you for your consideration.
Okay, so you're, you're, you mentioned that the property in the front is in the B1 zone, and so your 10-foot sideline variance, again, rather than a normal house would have a 25-foot sideline variance because it's in a B1 zone, only the 10 feet is required. So you eliminate that by shrinking the drive, by shrinking, in essence, the flagpole and the driveway through there. But we did have a concern about where the parking would be. I know we talked it through at the last meeting, that there, because right now, people are parking on both sides of the front house, the front and the rear of it, and along the driveway where it exists right now, that there probably is still appropriate parking there. But again, we're still talking about a driveway that's now going to have, that is only going to be 10 feet away from the existing house.
Correct.
So I understand it meets code, but it meets a business code, not, then you're talking about a residential use in the built, in the business district there. So what we're talking about is, is somebody who's trying to put a six-foot, six-bedroom dwelling and a five-car garage, including the middle garage for an RV, into this property, which probably is a very appropriate use, like you said, for this property. The problem is, what you're, that you're really trying to squeeze so much onto this lot, okay? Onto the front area of the lot, there's a lot going on there. We did see a previous plan of this, and I understand the planners met for years on this property, and the planning board has probably met a couple times as well. So it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy property and a task that you've got before you.
Correct.
And so you're here before you, because you can't get a subdivision without these variances. So you did come in before, trying to show us access on the right, but not using that access. That then showed of an easement running totally across the property, which this board really was not pleased at all with. So there's no question that this is a better drawing. I'm still just not sure that it's the appropriate use of the property. So, you know, again, you're, you are asking for some, I, I believe it's still significant variances. You may have 79% of the buildable area for the two lots, but really, you only have 58% of that second lot. So it's, you know, you're at 1.58 lots. So it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy lift, okay, at least from my perception. But I'm, I'll let board members speak at this point. Comments or questions from board members?
I have a question on the existing well for the residential area, that now is in the other property.
Yes, we do show a access and utility easement on that.
There's an easement for?
For them to be able to get to that well. So that will, that well will remain, and there will be an easement for that person to be able to get access and maintenance on that well.
If they need a new well, will they be able to put it on their own property? I don't know where the septic fields are.
Where's the septic fields, or not set forth?
Septic field is downhill at the, downhill and back of the house. So
Then where's the septic for the house in the front? Because you've got to maintain the separation.
That's what I was The septic for the house in the front is here. We, the only place, if you wanted to relocate, if you had to relocate the well, you could put, you'd have to put it in the wetland buffer. And we've gotten permits to, you'd have to get a permit for it, but it's, there is room to do it outside the wetland.
This one and a half-story residence, is there a garage as part of that residence, or there's no?
The existing house does have
No, there's no garage.
No, there's no garage at the existing home.
That's why we show, based on your comments previously, we did allocate three separate parking spaces for that, for that house. Single-family house, and we're showing three parking spaces for that that are delineated on the plan.
You're gonna, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I may be asking questions that are redundant from that meeting. You're gonna have a shared drive to both houses?
Correct.
Yes.
So at some point, it is possible that the front house would be sold to a separate owner?
That's possible, yes.
So my question still remains the same. If they're not allowed to put a garage in front of the house, they're gonna have room for a garage behind the house? That's why I'm asking if there's a garage.
I don't know. It's possible, you know, there's room behind there now with, with a
I mean, they're not having much
Only with a variance.
Right, with a variance. But it's been, the house has been there for 50 years.
Well, but
But it's been a rental property.
Yeah. But it's still, it's been there 50 years.
Again, in making, if we're gonna allow the subdivision, we have to anticipate what other prior, other uses
Okay.
that's gonna stay there. And technically, it could still be used as, unless we grant the, grant this, we're gonna make that a residence and keep it as a residence? So it's gonna lose its business standing?
It's still in the B1 zone.
Yeah, how it'd be fine.
Well, because then if it's gonna stay in the B1 zone, then really, where is the parking and stuff going to be if it becomes a business? Be in front of the house, I guess.
I think it would be beneficial for the town to unify that area.
You're the wrong board.
No, and I understand that it's legislative.
We don't do zoning, so, I mean, we don't do the
No, and I thoroughly understand that this is a tough position, that the legislative body of the town has put the zoning board in and having to determine a split zone. But that is part of why we're here before you today. The line was drawn smack dab in the middle of a property between two very different zones. And we're seeking to do the best residential development that we can, given the circumstances.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if that line behind the existing house was moved back, does that reduce your buildable, it's gonna reduce the, the lot acreage for the back house, right? So that's why you're tightening it up so much to the front.
We could, we could, we could maintain the areas. If you, if you wanted to push this back a little bit, we could bring this forward a little bit, and we could balance that out, we could do that. What we are trying to do is just keep the driveway to the back lot, on the back lot. But we, we could do that and then have another, you know, as part of that access easement. It's actually in the easement already. So yeah, we could do that and give, give them a little extra room behind the house. That we could do.
Yeah, because they may wanna come back now to this town.
Yeah, but if they want a garage, they want a pool, they want anything if it's a residence, and even if it's a business, I mean, you can't, if the parking lot, as I understand, is in the front, and that's where your septic fields are, you got a problem with that.
These images here show
That's not gonna be enough.
These images here show the existing structure.
Yeah.
And this is the proposed view of the construction that would take place in the back.
Yeah, I'm not worried so much about the back, I'm worried about that front, which ends up with very little, very little usable land.
Can you just leave it up there, the picture up there?
Right, if I'm understanding the
It's like a
The wetline setback requirements.
The, the proposed subdivision doesn't affect any part of that existing pavement right now, right? Right now, we're not changing anything from here forward.
I know, but echoing, I guess what I'm trying to get to is what the chairperson was getting to. You, you wanna convert this into residence. You're asking us to consider it perhaps to remain a residence. You wanna have the setback requirements imposed by a B1 zone. We're creating a property that's gonna be very hard for anybody to use. So if the drainage fields and septic are to the front of that house, now we have issues about where a well might possibly go. We have issues if they want a garage or pool. If it's residence, if it stays B1, I'm looking at, okay, where, where are you gonna put enough parking for a business there? Right now, you show parking for a residence, but how much parking is gonna be required for a business? So I'm hard, I have a hard time envisioning, based on what's here, how you're really accommodating that piece of property. And I understand they wanna maximize their return on it, they wanna keep that building there, hopefully get some rental income from it. But I don't know.
This is the first time we're on the, you know, this is a public hearing, so we do have to get a couple things on the record. We did have a discussion about the viability of that rental property in the front, and whether it just made sense to just, you know, tear down that house and just go with one use on the property, and we were told no.
And, and we also had a licensed real estate agent come out and value the house between $399 and $425,000. And it's also assessed by the town for $309,000.
So, so the owner has gotten the value of her property, so she's trying to get more out of this.
And we attempted, through commercial development, which was forwarded as well. So now, we're seeking to do a residential development that I believe keeps with the character and spirit of the neighborhood, has absolutely no adverse impacts whatsoever. If anything, is a benefit to the neighborhood of such a beautiful dwelling that's going to be constructed there. And if that can't be done, then I think that we're, we're in a territory where there's catastrophic financial impacts for my client.
Catastrophic?
Right.
You're suggesting tearing down a house with a value of nearly $400,000?
Is that assessment done based on this plan or based on the entire lot?
It was based on, as it sits currently.
So what's the catastrophic?
That there would be a majority of the property that couldn't be utilized.
As it is now, as she bought it?
Correct. And if there are no other options to
As the property has existed for, I'm sorry, the house has been there 50 years?
Yes.
It was built in 1953, so 70 years.
And it's, and it's been a residence the entire time. So I don't envision it becoming business use. I do think that it was a legislative failure, that we are in a split zone. And that's something that we're trying to deal with. And I think that we've showed the board a truly good-faith effort to minimize any of the adverse impacts that you guys thought would be adverse to the area and to the neighborhood. And that we've, we've reduced the amount of variances necessary. I think that we've shown you exactly what our proposed use is going to be. We have a commercial building that's in the town of Kent, that's going to be utilized for the family business. And these would be two purely residential structures. And we're seeking three area variances in order to comply with the town's subdivision code.
Yeah, I, I don't question their good faith, there's no doubt about that, I'm not questioning that at all. And again, I wasn't here for the review, unfortunately, I was ill last month. But as I look at this plan, you know, if, if this which is north, I guess, if that was line was 50 feet further up, and it was 50 feet wider, boy, I, I could buy that. When you have something that's sitting on top of a house, what is currently a house, and it may be used as a business, or maybe continued as a house, and we have to look at what's gonna happen with that piece of property into the future? I mean, that's difficult to envision, how that's gonna be entirely appropriate.
Okay, I, I'd like to clarify, if you weren't here on this before, I apologize. Everything from here forward, we're not proposing any improvements. So the entire front side and the back 50 feet of that house will remain exactly as it is. The house has been there for 70 years, we're not adding, taking away anything from them.
So But you are, because you're now reducing the ability for this house to park wherever they want and to use that whole side yard. Because you're now got it, sorry Jim, you have, now have a driveway that's gonna be traversing the property to get to the property in the back. So you really are, in fact, limiting the ability of the people to use that property. Because even in the pictures that you showed us, they're parking on both sides of the driveway.
Yeah, so five years from now, they wanna sell it, I buy it. I have my classic cars, and I wanna put a garage up, where do I do it? I wanna have a swimming pool for my grandkids, where do I put it? What do I do with that property?
This is no different than any other property that's
You, it is different, because you're asking us to create it. You're asking us to create a situation that people are gonna have to come to us, and they may or may not get it. We're not gonna be the ones sitting here possibly five, 10 years from now.
And I thoroughly, thoroughly understand your point, and I do think that that is an important consideration. But given the attempts to develop the property already, and given our ability to try and minimize the variances that are needed in order to complete this and comply with the subdivision code of the town of East Fishkill, I think that this is the, the best opportunity for development that this property has. It would create two residences, it would look to join the, the two zones. I do understand that there is concern about potential business use. But at the same time, that front half of the property has been used exclusively for residential use. As I'm sure you know, the commercial property that's in front has been vacant for quite some time. And I, I know that, that these are issues that take place on the legislative side of things, and that you guys are forced to deal with. But given the circumstances, I, I think these are the minimum variances necessary in order to achieve the goal that's desired. And I think that we've done a very good job at minimizing a lot of the hesitation that the board has had.
On top is, I just noticed you got a 48-inch easement running, what kind of easement, running through the front of the property for drainage from that brook? You got a pipe running over to the wetland?
That's not an easement, that's just a pipe.
That well? You can't change it, can you?
No.
So they can't build on top of it? Can't put a parking lot over it or anything?
But this is no different from the
It is very different.
Other properties, the small, you know, houses on the small lots that didn't have a lot of trouble.
So
There's a difference between, the people have smaller houses, or houses on small lots. And then you have the zoning, and they're sort of stuck with it, and creating that situation. That's the difference.
We can look at moving that lot line off the back of the house. We can look at moving this back and opening that up to give them more room.
What's
When we laid this out, we tried to keep more of the proposed driveway on the proposed lot in back. But I do see your concern, that, that is a good concern, and we could push that back and give more room along that, that
I mean, at the end of the day, we're not creating the subdivision, but by granting variances, we would be setting the stage for the planning board. Not that they have to agree with us, in terms of where we recommend the, any line to be. But Jim, if you don't mind, can I ask a couple dimensional questions? Number one, what's the frontage on there, for the poles, the frontage for the?
Here?
Yeah.
That's 54.03 feet.
What's the requirement?
I believe it's 50, let me check. Uh, se, I'm sorry.
Because you're
430. B1. I'm sorry, I'm reading it backwards. You're looking for, oh, on the flag.
Not on the flag, I'm looking for the, the frontage.
Yeah, yeah, yes, it's 54, 54.03 feet.
And the requirement is?
50 or 75?
75. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Are tables at 54? I'm sorry, it was mistaken on the plan.
Because there's that little area that's not horizontal, it goes in a bit.
Thanks, thanks for asking that question. So yeah, it's 54 plus 29. So it's
81.
83 feet. And required is 75. Yeah, the chart
Okay. And what's the area, the disturbance area?
0.97 acres, we're just under an acre of disturbance with the entire
So even with the changes that you've proposed, from the last time that we saw it, you're still at the 0.98, that calculation hasn't changed?
Right, because what we did bef, we were just moving property lines around. And we've still got, you know, we've still got a driveway, a house, garage, green around the house, separate system as well. So yeah, we need, you know, have to be the equal disturbance on single-family blocks. And as I mentioned before, everything from here forward doesn't change. That limit disturbance starts here and goes back.
But that, those, the limits of disturbance are just outside, where you've got some, you know, you have some difference in topography there. Going up on the right side of the, of the paved area, and even in the back. So there's gonna be some moving around of earth back there, and it's, you're still gonna limit it. Nothing's gonna spill beyond the 0.98.
We've done other development projects like this, we put standard practice now, and with development is you stake out the limit disturbance, you put up construction fence, and you grade up to the construction fence.
Okay.
You know, we're showing 0.97.
All right, this, any other questions, comments from board members?
And you haven't done, I understand that you're not building on where the existing house is, but the one thing I have is, for the calculations that you've done on the new lot, and the percentages and everything, that hasn't been done for the existing house, correct? So what, what kind of percentages do you have there? Am I not seeing that, or?
Could you, do you ask the question again, I don't understand, sorry.
You're sort of ignoring this front lot, because the house already exists.
No. No, our talps are for the entire property. So we, there's a table up top that shows all the areas for the whole property.
Okay, lot one and lot two.
Okay, this is a lot count, this is a lot count talp, and it counts everything.
So, but disturbances, you're ignoring again the front because you're saying it's already disturbed.
We're not, we're not doing, we're not, there's no disturbance proposed at all from here forward. We're just using exactly what's there, it's been there, I don't know, it's been there for seventy years, but it's, we're not, we're not proposing any changes to the front. It meets the dimensional requirements, the slope requirements, a common drive, a shared driveway. We don't need any improvements there forward.
When you were thinking of giving the front existing building a little bit more wiggle room, were you thinking of bringing the line back to the B one R three line maybe? Is that what you were thinking about? Or, so that, so that...
I hadn't, this all just came up ten minutes ago, but it was really enough to be able to build what we do, and we would probably look at what the backyard setback is and see what you could put a reasonable sized garage in that setback so that someone could come back, put up a reasonable sized garage without having to compere variance.
No, because one of the reasons I'm thinking about is because the front of the property is zoned as a B one zone, and part of it is an R three zone, the rare part, you know, the way you have drawn the lines. So down the road, if somebody wants to put some business up there, they could potentially have issues because now you've got a little residential in the back. But if the lot, existing house is all, you know, predominantly in a B one zone, then that issue would be eliminated, potentially...
If I move it back approximately fifty feet, we could bring it back to that B one zone line.
So that, so the R three and B three is completely separated out?
And we could actually take this and move it and actually more closely follow that line, and then...
Yeah, that's what, because the thing is, I mean, somebody may come back and appeal and say, okay, we are in a B one zone, so we need to use it for as a B one, you know, because you're entitled to it.
That's a good idea, we could make that, make the line follow the zone line as far as possible, and then...
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, 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 I'm seeing what I'm, anyway.
And respectfully, the property was attempted to be developed commercially, and that did not prove fruitful. So I do think it's a concern, but I also think it's important to consider my client and the applicant in that they attempted to use this lot commercially, and it was unable to do so. And they purchased another property in the town of Kent and developed it commercially. So now they'll be the owners of both properties. I think that if you spoke to the applicant, they would say that they're looking to be, particularly in the back house for the foreseeable future, and have it be a family residence for a long time.
Yeah, you've mentioned that they tried to make it, use the property for, as a, you know, commercial property. What was the problem, I mean?
It's a residential, they couldn't, they actually were found in violation because they were operating a business back there and they were not allowed to.
Okay, so basically, yeah, because the...
No, 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 we did not...
Okay, can you get the mic, yeah?
Okay, I'll speak into the mic. Originally, back when I bought our house in Kent, we had our trucks and everything, because it was a mom and pop business, and they were there. My husband and I, we bought the business, we bought the house thinking we could keep them at the Kent residence. I received a violation from the town of Kent saying we needed to move the trucks out of there. Understandable, mom and pop businesses were, are like a thing of the past. So what we did was, I looked at the, this property, it is zoned in the fright, in the front, excuse me, light industrial. Being light industrial, i.e. underneath the description, it says you can have a kennel there, you can have a gas station there, you can, and I thought to myself, well, if I can have a gas station, I could have blacktop trucks. So I went ahead and I purchased it, thinking that would be fine. So I hired Mike Gillespie, he went through numerous plans, and we found that, no, the town of East Fishkill did not want a blacktop business there. I understood that, I pursued it further, excuse me, to buy another piece of property, which is IOC, Industrial Office Commercial, which I understand I can have blacktop trucks. So that's where I put the whole business over there at that establishment. Now, this is something that, yes, it's got a residential home, a rental home, because I needed to do something with it, I purchased it, now what do I do with it? So that's why I rented out the house, and I'm not looking to use that house. Yes, it's in commercial, if the town wants to make it residential, I'm all for it, it does not bother me. But I have no reason to take this rental house and use it as a commercial use in any way, shape, or form. And I'm just looking to have my own home, I have my mother-in-law's home that I purchased, but now I'd like to have my own residential home, and that's what I'm looking to do. Nothing more than that, that's all I'm asking of the town. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
No, because it was mentioned that, you know, the business was, the town was having some problems or whatever the issues were, and I'm trying to figure out why, was it an accessibility issue or whatever it is?
They said no.
Okay, fine, but again, but again, it's, you know, it's a half, part of it is residential, and part of it is commercial, and so, but again, for, to make it, I mean, just because it's in front of us, I don't know which way we were gonna go, but just bringing the line and separating it at the commercial residential location might make it easier because once somebody, ten, fifteen years down the road, somebody may wanna do something with it, especially being in a B one, B one zone, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Want to open it for, go for public comment?
Yeah.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for, against the appeal from Catherine Harshorn, requesting an area variance of point four two acres for a lot count calculation in order to subdivide a seven point eight one acre parcel of land, which is owned B one and R three, that she owns a thirty-eight seventy-five row fifty-two into two lots, one of which is proposed to be three point two three acres, and the other is proposed to be four point four, five, eight acres, a point five six acre variance for the buildable area for lot two, a thirteen foot width variance for the width of the flagpole. Anybody wanna offer any comments?
Can you come to the mic?
Can you come to the microphone, please? And then if you do speak, we just ask if, after you're done speaking, if you can just print your name on the clipboard on the table there, just so we have it for the minutes.
Okay, I was just wondering, with the residential part in the front, is it possible...
With the residential, the residential...
The area, a lot in one.
Is a business?
Is a business, yes, but it's a residential...
It's been used as a residence.
Is there an ability to change that to an R, was it one or two or, or three? Okay, is that a possibility, or is that...
Discretion of the town board.
Okay, the other question is, so the front, the lot, B one, a lot in one, is that, so that's commercial. Down the road, is somebody able to put a business there, like, you know?
Yeah, you can put a business there tomorrow.
Tomorrow, exactly, yeah. So I guess my concern is, are you able to change a business to a residential zoning?
It's a non-conforming use, but it has been there for a number of years. So because of that, she's allowed to continue that non-conforming use.
If they put a business in there?
Right.
And it didn't work out, can they put a tenants back in there for residents? No.
Right.
So it can only be used...
Only because they're, we use the phrase grandfathered in. The fact that it was being used as a residence before it was owned to be one business. So that's why they're allowed to continue.
So, does it stay a, I'm confused, does it stay a residential?
Um, it's a continued use.
Continued use, okay.
But once it's vacant for more than a year, that residential use goes away.
Oh.
Right, and the thing is, this was, this was before zoning, the zoning came much later. This was built around nineteen fifty or so, and the zoning came...
Nineteen sixty-three.
Yeah, much later, and so it was grandfathered in, and so whatever was happening, was happening. So that's why it's currently zoned, the front part of it is currently zoned business, so anybody can do anything with it in the front part.
Within the B one.
Within the B one zone, correct, within the B one zone, correct.
It's allowed in the B one zone.
Correct.
So you can't change a B one to a residential?
The town board can consider it.
Oh.
This board cannot.
Oh, okay.
We just can't do it. If it wasn't already there, we couldn't do it, because it's been there for seventy years, we can continue to do it.
Okay, oh, you mean to keep the residential? That's good, because we like the residence, I mean, it's nice.
Which is why this board has to look at not just its current use, but we have to look at the property and the potential future use of this property.
Yeah, because I, I mean, the wetland is my concern also, because, I mean, you don't want to degrade it. And you don't want a lot of trees coming down. And I guess, I noticed, I guess, in the fifty foot, foot off the back, I guess that's, that'll stay trees and even before that, I guess, basically.
You see their limits of disturbance, John, if you don't mind, can you outline it? It's pretty well delineated on there.
Yeah.
Right now, this data line is a proposed limit of disturbance of what's being cleared to build the house.
Okay, so basically, that's what, yeah.
Showing this, showing all of this to remain, yeah.
Okay, so all the trees will remain, which is a good thing. I know I wrote something else down where I put it's another story. So basically, the wetland is everything, there's a buffer, I guess, a hundred foot buffer.
This, this line with the triangles is the actual wetland limit. So the wetland starts here and comes out all the way into here.
Right.
This long, dark dash line is the hundred foot wetland buffer. So that's a state wetland, state buffer, and we're not proposing any disturbance within that whole hundred foot zone. So what we're doing is, we're leaving everything within a hundred feet of that wetland as is.
As is, okay.
And by proper construction techniques, soil and water control during construction, and then landscaping and vegetating everything, you know, there's not, by the time, you know, whatever impacts there might be due to the construction, thinking is the hundred foot filter before you get to the wetland would purify and filter and clean the water by the time it gets to the wetland.
Because there's a lot of, we do get a lot of deer, like a lot of deer, and they're, yes, the bear, oh my god. And we get blue jays and squirrels and the whole gamut. So there's a lot, there's a lot out there. Yeah, and the, oh, the other question was about the vehicles also. I think we brought it up, that the vehicles from, the equipment vehicles wouldn't be stored or maintained on, just yours, yeah.
And we're happy to put restrictions on the plan, you know, no gaming equipment, no heavy highway construction equipment, or it will be unprofitable.
None, yeah. Those were my concerns, basically.
Thank you, if you don't mind signing, please, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer comments? Any further comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, I think because the applicant is willing to make some changes, I think we should adjourn it for them to come back with...
To show us what they're proposing?
Exactly, yeah, I think, because I think it's too early to close it today, unless...
No, I don't like that.
That's a good idea.
I mean, they, and this map doesn't show some of the changes they've already said they're willing to make, so I don't know.
So just make sure that the notes reflect all the changes that you're proposing, so that, you know, all the ratios and everything. Because that's how we're gonna be advertising if we do go forward.
All right, so do you have, is that a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number seven has, is on hold until the June meeting, so we're going right to item number eight. We are now done with the public hearing, so these are the reviews. Item number eight is Appeal three eight nine six, Catral, Gunther Catral, one ten Van Black Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a sixteen hundred square foot variance for an existing forty foot by forty foot detached garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. I am not seeing Mr. Catral or his attorney, so... We're gonna, can I have a motion to direct the clerk to send a notice to Mr. Catral about... Giving us an update on the status of his application?
Removed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no show. Okay, I announced earlier that there's no action on item number seven. So we're, I'm sorry, on number nine, so we're going right to number ten. Appeal three nine zero four two eight, Juan two eight, one twenty-two, Loma Lane, Hopewell Junction is requesting a fifty-five foot sideline variance for a proposed twenty-eight panel ground mounted solar array to be located on this property pursuant to local law one of two thousand and nineteen.
Great, thank you.
So in the, since our last meeting, we did have an opportunity to review this at our last meeting. Subsequent to that meeting, well, at that meeting, we actually set a site visit. We went out on a Saturday morning and did a site visit of the property and saw that the applicant's got a wonderful backyard, all right? The, where you're proposing to put the solar panels is significantly down and away from the house. You've got a, really a nice backyard there, and you've got the room to put the panels where they belong, okay? And this is, this is a local law that was only adopted this year.
Yes.
So you had the opportunity to come to the town board as they were working on that law and ask them to give it, give it a little bit more or a little bit less of a side yard variance if that was in fact a corporate.
Just wanted to let you know.
I figured it is much, so...
My name is Mark, and I would have loved to have worked with you guys on a lot, because we've done probably three or four hundred ground mounted systems between Rockland, Orange, Dutchess counties. How we know when you were working on it, we might have tried to show up and help you. Typically, as a rule of thumb, what we've told our salesman is if it's systems, ground mounted systems looking to go in the backyard, typically use a fifty foot barrier, because a lot of times in Orange County, the variant, the offset's twenty-five feet, sometimes it's fifty. We haven't seen a hundred feet unless it's been from, you know, the front of the house. So that's probably where our salesman was thinking, and when the system was sold, thinking, hey, we can tuck the system away behind this tree line. You're gonna have to screen it from the neighbors on either side, so whether it's a hundred feet in or it's forty-five feet in, we're still gonna screen it from the back. It's not gonna be sitting in the middle of your property, it doesn't inhibit, you know, your use of the land in the future. And more importantly, for the future of the homeowner, in terms of future homeowners, selling the house, there's not a system sitting in the middle of the property. So I think that our thinking was, if it's about fifty feet off the property line, we're gonna shield it from the back, so the neighbors to the back or to the east won't see it, and also to the west, and it's not sitting in the middle of the property, because as you said, he's got a beautiful property, and where we propose it, I think logically makes a lot of sense.
But you can meet the code.
We can meet the code, yes.
If he doesn't want to, because he doesn't wanna see it, is not a valid reason for us to grant a variance.
Yeah, I just think logically, if it was any of your property, I think you'd want it tucked away on the side, because I just, I don't think, I know that it encroaches upon the rule of a hundred feet, but if it's screened from the neighbors on either side, why would we obstruct the use of the land in the middle of the property? Just why, why would we wanna put a system in the middle of this property when it achieves the same thing?
We can't question the decision that was made by the town board.
I understand.
We can only deal with the law that they approved, and that's the requirements that they put on that law just this year. It's not like they put into this on the law fifteen years ago, and now, you know, we've got an issue. This was just adopted this year, so kinda creates, puts us in a funny place because obviously we'd be creating a precedent just because he wants it where he wants it, as opposed to where...
I think that aesthetics should really be taken into consideration when you're talking about systems like these. You know, the system is gonna face south, which will, the back of it will be exposed to the property. If it was flipped the other way around, and if you were looking out your window, looking at the glass, that's nice. Instead, you're looking at the structure behind it. Where they want it, it would be shielded by trees right now, so you really wouldn't even see it.
Yeah, but even the way his property was, it was easy for him to put a row of arborvitae's... Yeah, but even the way his property was, it was easy for him to put a row of arborvitae's or forsythias or some kind of shrubs there further up, like halfway down the property, he wouldn't have to see it. There's plenty of opportunity for him to be able to screen this, for him to keep it where it belongs.
He could screen it, but it's still being in the middle of his property, that's kind of where we're going, and...
But he had, he has a large, flat area down in the back there, so you're not really restricting his ability to use that property.
Would just obstruct it, screening, the same reason that you're screening for the neighbors, right, you'd be able to see it. Um, additionally, if we had it at the hundred feet, like we went over, the neighbor will still be able to see it, whether it's at the hundred or the forty five.
Right, so, but it's further away for that neighbor.
Yeah, but it's...
Again.
Neighbor's not gonna kick his soccer ball at it.
It's, it's as visible in reality, and you're gonna see it. I just think that, I mean, isn't the idea of the variance to be able to, with prob, I mean, I understand you saying there's no reason why he can't have it, he just wants it there. I just think from a, a use of land, it makes so much more sense to push this thing to the side, where it's not gonna affect the production of the system at all, it doesn't affect either of the neighbors, and it allows for more land, more use of land, particularly for the future. If he wants to do anything there, he can, he has enough land, it's not in the middle, he doesn't have to work around a ground mounted system, and more importantly, it doesn't inhibit the sale of his house. You know, we like to, we like to have the, sell these systems as, you know, they're kinda out of sight, you know, if, if they can be, you know, if there's a road, trees, great, we could place it there, and it's gonna function the exact way we say it's going to, without inhibiting your use of land or the future, you know, selling your house. Um, you can, hey, you can sell your house as free electric to the next homeowner, and they don't have to worry about looking out the window and seeing a ground mounted system in the middle of the property. I think fifty feet is, is, is fair, especially if...
You're not at fifty feet, you're at forty five.
All right, so if, let's say it was fifty feet, or even sixty feet.
Wait, wait, what, my point is you're asking for more than fifty percent of what's required in a variance, you don't need that.
And, and again, we, we didn't come with, we probably should have, measuring tapes for a hundred feet. So we're a certain extent estimating, but there were some trees that were between his house and much further from the property line. So for him to be shielded, and again, along the back line, he could put arborvitae that are that tall enough to cover hi- his view. So I don't know that, as far as his aesthetics and having to do anything, that that's an argument. So whether we agree with your logic or the wisdom of the town board in passing the statute with these setbacks, if you can meet it, on what basis do we give a variance? What is the legal basis for...
Because there are five factors, and, uh, your application, I would say, clearly has a problem with three of them, and I'll, I'll read them off.
Sure.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, which you can, you can, you don't need an area variance. Another one is whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, it's substantial, we, we know that, what is it about, it's over fifty feet?
Yeah.
So, it's, you have an over fifty percent variance, so it's substantial, and the, another one you have a big problem with is whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, and you're putting in new solar, solar panels, so that would be totally self-created.
Mm-hmm.
So three of the five, at least, you have a problem with, the other two, it's arguable.
It's self-created, but you also have to think it's better for the environment in the long run, right, like what we're doing is not...
And he can go ahead and do it.
What's that?
And we can go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I get it, um, I just think that, I heard you talk about future use of land and future, uh, you know, if that property is sold with the last case, and I just think that this is so much better for the property itself. I don't think moving it inside, and you, you said fifty, fifty percent, I mean, we would, if sixty, is sixty feet, is that attainable? I think, because it's not a huge difference.
You're asking us to set a precedent on a law that was just asked, adopted this year.
I'm asking you to consider aesthetics when, when considering that law, because I think that, that we, I think that solar panels, especially ground mounted systems, are very new, and we don't, and we haven't seen how they've been affected in the next, uh, market when houses go to sale, and as a solar, as a solar, uh, owner, I would like to know that my clients can sell their houses uh, with the systems as proposed, working functionally, functioning properly, and also without damaging the aesthetics of their home or their, their use of land.
But by what you're saying, you're saying that the town board did not factor that into their decision when they adopted the law this year, and I, I beg to disagree with that statement.
I'm not saying that, I think that, that this particular property, those, that, that, those guidelines put that ground in the middle of the property, and I don't, and I understand, I think we're all in agreement that, hey, it makes sense to put it forty five feet away, we get that, but the, the rule, the law states it's gotta be a hundred, and I guess that's why we're here with the variance, and I guess it's a matter of aesthetics, and you're telling me that we don't have an opportunity to do that because it isn't, there's, we're not violating anything.
But I'm not sure we all agree that forty five feet is, is far enough away, you're making that claim, I'm not sure that any of us are making that claim.
And the problem I have is, this property's big enough, the house is so close up to the front, that this property's big enough that he can put this solar array up, he can put a swimming pool up still, he could put up a gazebo, a large gazebo and stuff, and have huge gatherings on this property.
I'd still have a soccer field down there.
And still have his solar array up. I mean, it's not like my property that's only a hundred and fifty feet wide, if I want it, where do I put it?
Uh, yeah, exactly, I mean, is there anything in the law for that?
That's consideration, I didn't create that, so if you agree that a solar array is environmentally responsible, we should be doing that, that's grounds to come in. Not when you have a piece of property that's big enough to put everything you could possibly want on the property, that's the problem you have, and as councils indicated, I don't know how you meet the burden, if you just keep saying aesthetics over and over again.
And as you know, that we did a site, uh, visit.
Yep.
And we saw that his backyard is sufficiently big, so there's no hardship other than aesthetics that I can see. Um, and then, even with aesthetics, I was there, we were trying to, um, eyeball it, and I think he can put a couple of, there's at least one tree that is partially blocking, he can put a couple of more trees, and he will not be able to see it from his, uh, back, um, from his kitchen area or back area. So, so I, I, you know, because we have done a site visit, um, the only argument that you're giving us is aesthetics, um, I don't think that's a strong enough argument, so, um, I think, and then you have all this huge backyard to use, uh, and I, again, I had asked for proper staking, and the staking was not done, um, and so...
It just wasn't, for example.
Yeah, I guess, I don't think it was exact.
Yeah, the homeowner said he took care of it, so I didn't, you know, I didn't...
It wasn't done, I was there, it wasn't done, so, in any event, um, so I, I guess, I, I'm not really convinced at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that the aesthetics aren't that important then, at that point. Uh, I really would urge you to consider it moving forward, because I don't think you wanna get stuck with unhappy, with people not being able to sell their properties because of these rules.
So do you wish to pursue this application further, or are you gonna withdraw it?
Sounds like you don't even be able to.
Yeah, I mean, you're telling us we have to put it according to the rules, we have to go back to the homeowner and see if he's open to that, if he's not, the, the deal's probably dead.
Yeah, I guess the only thing we can do is see what kind of room the homeowner would be willing to do, but if you're saying, what if it's only ten feet, you know, like...
It's not, it's not up to us to tell you what would be acceptable, we can't, you have to come to us and tell us why.
But there'll be, you just said it, there's no hardship, he just likes, he doesn't like the way it looks, right? So I feel like even if we were at ninety five, you would still not grant us the variance because there's no hardship, is what I'm, the feedback I'm getting, correct?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if there's any more...
Council went through the guidelines, you sit down with the owner and say, this is what the town says you have to meet, are we gonna get there if we don't put it? And you have a very big burden, I don't know how you're gonna get there after visiting the property, I don't know how you get there on, on any of those issues. So, yeah, we're being frank, we understand why you wanna do it, we're not saying that you're doing, you know, improper purposes or anything, I understand it, but...
Installed it, I had a professional fence guy install it, and...
Well, they're not gonna tell you town code, so...
They just wanna install it.
Exactly.
Is it in the front of your property?
No, it's on the side of the house, around a mine ground pool, you can't see it from the road or anything.
How big is your property?
It is three point three acres.
Okay, so you have a fairly large, what's your, what's your zoning of your... Are you in R one, R three, what's, what's the required zoning in your area?
I have no idea.
I mean, the only time, three acres, okay, so it is three acres, okay, thank you, sorry, I didn't, didn't look at that. Um... So it's just around the pool?
It's just around the pool, it's on the side of the house, so, and there's a lot of bedrock and, you know, ledger, so, ledge rock, so if they had to put a, a vinyl in it, it would've been, like, the cost would've been astronomical, because they have to, with the chain link, they can just core into the rock and put it into the rock, I guess.
Is the chain coated?
It's black chain link, yeah.
Okay, so it's got an epoxy finish or something to it?
No, it's just a chain link fence with, you know, black, I guess, a black coating around it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Coating on it, yeah, okay, so it's...
And I needed a five foot, because where the hill comes down, it would be less than forty eight inches, so I couldn't put a four foot in.
That's an important thing.
That's important to hear.
That's very important.
So I couldn't put, like, I didn't just put a five foot chain link in, I needed the five foot, because...
And did you take any pictures or anything?
No, I didn't.
Can you take some pictures so we can see something what it looks like?
Sure, I, I might have some on my phone, I can find it.
Nah, not right now, but just...
Next month.
Okay.
See if you can print a couple out from up close, and then from the roads and neighbors, so we can get an idea of different points of view.
Okay.
But that's an important point, if you have a problem with, and you can show that, that gradient, so...
Yeah, I mean, the hill comes right down to it, they were out there, the inspectors, and they said, you, you need a five foot, because you can't have a four foot here, it won't work.
So is this fence, though, extending out in front of your house, though?
No, it's not even close to the road, it's a hundred and twenty five...
Not to the road, is it in front of your house?
No, it comes along the side of, like, the front of the house, it goes right on...
Come up here a second, let me show you what I'm seeing. This is the front line of your house.
Yes.
So, I guess because the property line is here, this is the front line of the house, somebody's showing us?
No, that's the side of the house, it's, it's on an angle, my house, this is the road, right here.
Yeah, but that, what I'm saying is, does it see the front line of your house? If we draw the front line of your house, it's coming out in the front of the house.
That's not the fence, that's the area disturbance, the fence is right around the pool, like, I mean, literally, right around the pool.
Oh, okay, all right, so this is some other line.
When they were doing the pool.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I, I mean, usually, we get a survey, not a...
Well, they started with the pool.
But you're, you're not looking for the air, you're looking for the height, not for the area.
Exactly.
So we, we don't have to send you back for that.
Yes.
Motion to advertise.
Well, but we do have a problem that this chain link fence is not allowed by code.
Oh, is that right?
That's the issue. But do we consider this a decorative fence because it's... Because it's coated? That's, that's the angle that we were kinda going with, because it's not just your typical silver chain link tent fence that's gonna...
And if I put a vinyl on the side of the house, you'll feel blocked in, so I, you know, I'm in the woods, I wanna be open to the woods in the pool, I didn't wanna put a vinyl, you know.
It's a decorative fence, basically.
I, I think that's the angle we have to go with, is, is, it qualifies as a decorative fence.
Okay.
You're gonna take some pictures of this decorative fence, of course, and then, and the slope.
Let's be creative.
Motion to advertise.
So, motion to advertise.
Awesome, thank you, when, when do I come back?
Wait, hold on, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so...
Next month.
Go down and speak.
Cam will give you your instructions, because you gotta put a sign at your, front of your house?
Thank you.
Thank you. Decorative fence, remember that. All right, number twelve, Appeal three nine zero six, Verizon Wireless, Young Summer LLC. Young Summer LLC, representing Verizon Wireless, is requesting a special permit to co-locate on an existing roof mounted antenna which was approved in nineteen eighty three, located at Globe, at the Global Foundries Site, two twenty seventy Route fifty two, Hopewell Junction, pursuant to section one ninety four dash seventy nine of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Excuse me one second, I'm just gonna recuse myself from this, thank you.
Sure. My name is Scuddles, I'm an attorney with, uh, attorney for Verizon Wireless, working with Young Summer. So we have an application for a special use permit before you.
Mm-hmm.
And as you said, it's, uh, putting three small, what we call small cell antennas onto an existing tower. That tower is about, uh, it goes up to ninety, uh, the top of the antenna that's up on there now is a hundred and nine feet.
Off of the roof of the building?
Yeah, the, it's, so there's this, what I call a stub, stub tower on the roof of the building, it's building number five, or lot five. Um, and they have an existing antenna up there now, I don't know for what purpose it's used, but it's a, it's a Yagi omnidirectional antenna.
Okay.
Used by the owner, and that, that's, top elevation of that, looks like it's about a hundred and one feet tall.
Okay.
We are not proposing to go above that at all, we're gonna be at like a ninety three foot, about ninety three feet height elevation at the highest. We wanna add a forty eight square foot little equipment area on the roof of the building at the base of the antenna, um, and that's, it's a small...
So you're gonna have a shelter at the base?
No, 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 it's not even a shelter, it's really just some very small outdoor equipment, this is not your standard cell tower, what you expect. Um, it's a small cell facility, it's designed to provide much smaller footprint of coverage, um, generally...
Have a backup generator in there?
No, backup power.
Wow.
No, no, this is, um, so right now, what the, actually, I'm surprised we haven't been to this town with more of these sites, I've been to Beacon, I've been all over the place. There are small cell facilities that are designed to increase capacity, because there are just too many users on the system, especially with some of these higher, you know, these, the Mount Beacon site that we have, and they're just too high, so we're filling in at the lower level with these small cell facilities.
In my mind, you're trying to boost the signal that's already there, is that what you're...
No, it's, no, it's, it's not a repeater, it's, actually, it's, it's gonna be a very, it's gonna be, it's a new signal based on our existing frequencies, yeah.
So i- is this a co-location, is it being co-located on the existing tower?
It is, exactly.
So it's attached to the existing tower?
It will be, yes, the antennas will be attached to the existing tower, and I believe the tower was approved, so I think if you look at your law, um, the last I looked, it's an eligible structure, um, there's new federal, well, it's not so new anymore, federal regulations that it's, we believe is an eligible facilities request, weirdest name ever.
So are their antennas higher up?
They're not gonna be higher than the tower.
I know these are not, but are there, is there anything higher than what's there now? So he's really just filling out...
So there, if you look at our application, exhibit four.
Yeah.
We have an elevation view, and it's, uh, sheet Z three.
Yep.
And it shows you the existing tower, and it's on top of a building, although you wouldn't know it's a building, the way it's drawn. And there's, like I said, one omnidirectional antenna at the top. The three, and then we put our three antennas at the ninety three foot level, you can see, so we're not going to go above anything that's taller.
So, sorry, in consultation with our attorney, is this de minimis? I mean, not for nothing, there's no neighbors.
Oh, no, I know.
In the code, this should go for a public hearing, just because it's a co-location.
I understand.
But I think, I think we should advertise for next meeting, given our time.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna request.
Okay.
Um, and we have to get site plan approval, too, and so we would like to submit our site plan, and I think they told us at first, go to the zoning board, don't submit your site plan application yet, we would like to submit it because the federal law says that these applications, don't take this the wrong way, they have to be approved in sixty days, we don't realize, we don't expect that that's gonna happen, but we're, we're trying to make it happen as quick as possible. It's the Middle Class Tax Relief Act of two thousand and twelve.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to pull for a public hearing?
Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next month.
Sounds like we're on the same page. Thank you.
Okay, the question is, how many signs does he need? I know.
One on fifty two.
Well, you need it on Route fifty two, so...
And Lime Cone?
One on Lime Cone.
It's Global, oh. Wait, wait a second, this is Global Foundries property.
Yeah.
Not natural resource, not, so which... I mean, you don't need along I eighty four, obviously, so is it just fifty two, or is it...
Lime Cone and fifty two should be enough.
I think, Lime Cone, too?
But is it, is that this property?
That's more I park.
That's I park, exactly, that's the different owner.
Oh, that's I park, oh, that's just further down.
In that facility, I park was the owner.
It's just fifty two.
Right.
I remember doing the title, I got confused, and they confirmed...
So do you have any frontage?
No.
No, we really don't, it's an internal room. You can see, carved that all up.
So I think it has to be just at the entrance of I park, can you, are you allowed to put a sign up at the entrance of I park? For thirty days, I mean, whatever it is. I, I think that's, but I think that's it, I don't think it...
Right, because the other, the other...
It's not his property.
Okay.
Well, but there's entrances off Lime Cone, too, into I park.
Yeah, but it's not his property again.
But either the front, fifty two isn't his property either.
Right.
Two signs would be more than enough.
I think, to cover it, you do both, why run to me first sign?
So one at Lime Cone Road and one at the...
One Lime Cone, one fifty two entrance, two entrances.
Fifty two entrance.
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, that's sufficient notice.
Right, that's...
Not that anybody's gonna come anyways.
No, we do that, we do that.
They'll take care of that.
All you have to do is come in and get this on.
Josie, can Ford do it?
No, tomorrow.
That's what it has to be.
Yeah, it has to be.
Cam handle that.
That's not a problem, I have someone at Beacon.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, item number thirteen, Appeal three nine zero seven, Acevito, Eric Acevito, one oh nine South Vacation Drive, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a two foot variance for a proposed six foot fence to be located in the front yard, as well as a variance for a proposed above ground pool to be located in front of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety four dash ninety eight and one ninety four dash ninety five of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
This sounds really familiar, that we saw one of these in Hillside Lake a couple of years ago.
Okay.
That you have a property probably that goes from one street to the back street, and you're...
It's like a, it's kinda like a, a track, we're like on a track, we're in the middle, and then there's a full...
Yeah, you, you have two front yards. Yeah, you have two front yards.
Full oval.
And so you're looking to put a pool on the, in what you consider your backyard, but it's really a front yard.
Yeah, our, our entrance to the, to our house is towards South Vacation Drive, and our back would be East Vacation Drive.
Yeah, this is, we didn't grant the other one, so... So where are you proposing to put this pool?
The pool would be in the cent, uh, center of the property. It's twenty-five feet from the right side, twenty-seven, twenty-six feet from the right side, about thirty feet, or more than thirty feet from the left side. It's more like basically another twenty-five from the house to the front.
Where's your septic?
My septic is in the, is by the deck. If you see the thing, it's right in front of the deck.
Where are your fields?
No, the fields go all the way out into the East Vacation Drive. It, it goes about ten feet towards the property line, towards the, my left side, and then a pole goes straight, a pipe goes straight across to the back. And at the edge of the back area is about four...
Okay, so you're proposing to have the pool much closer to your house?
Closer to the house, because the leach fields are out.
Gentleman who was in last time, if you remember, guys, was much, much closer to the, to that back property line.
The leach fields are all the way out on East Vacation Drive.
Two surveys were submitted with that.
Oh, okay.
And it didn't come out on the copy.
It didn't come out on the copies, that's why I'm looking at this and saying, where is it? Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, here's the, what Pam got, so it's barely visible on there. If you want to just let the others see that real quick.
Oh, we can kinda see it.
And so where are you proposing the fence?
The fence, um, all around, um, along East Vacation Drive. As soon as they said we need two feet away from the property line, which I had surveyed, the stakes surveyed out on all sides.
Okay, so you wanna, you wanna fence in your whole backyard, irregardless of the pool?
Yes.
You're not just putting it just as screening for the pool.
No, because I have, uh, two small children, which we're gonna put a playset, like, it's a small playset, towards, more towards the back. And, um, also we have a thirty-pound German Shepherd, which will be seventy-five pounds in the next year, and can jump a four-foot fence with no problem.
Okay.
So that's the reason we went for the six. But the design of the one we picked for the six-foot, it still has like maybe a foot or two left of visible, like, it's not so much for privacy, it's semi-private the fence, but it also has, like, where your head would go, it has slots where you can still see through. It's not really, you know, it's not a wall. You know, we didn't want to put a closed-in six-foot from front to back. When I walked through it, I basically...
It's got some decorative finish to it, so it's not just a walk.
Yeah, it's basically, yeah. It's like semi-private towards the bottom, and then the back is kinda like picketed. So you, as you walk by, you still see through, so it's a lot of visibility still.
And you're, you're putting, you're proposing to put it across the entire backyard, not just a sporadic little piece?
No, it's basically covering the whole yard.
People wondering why it's there.
We're enclosing it, and then towards the front, we even, so we didn't want so much, like you said, we didn't want so big. The front is gonna have matching, a matching four-foot fence facing the driveway and the left side of our house also.
I mean, we normally have an issue with pools, but in this case, he's, he's got extenuating circumstances here, and it's so much closer to his house as opposed to, so he's gonna hear the noise as opposed to the neighbors.
Yeah.
And a...
And our, our right side, it's, it's, it's a empty land, towards, we're keeping it more towards the right, where it's unused land, is an acre of land there that nobody's built on. It's owned, but it's not, it's just trees, and it's more away from our neighbors to the, to the, to the left of us.
It's the pleasure of the board.
I have a message there.
Yeah, it's thirty-six, uh, um, feet pool, how far, five feet high?
Uh, yeah, it's about, uh, I think it's a forty-eight, or forty-five, something like that.
Yes, about four, five feet.
Yeah, about four, five feet, yeah.
No, it's not a very big pool, then.
No, no, no.
Okay. Uh, motion to advertise?
Thank you. It's your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Pam will give you your instructions, the clerk...
Uh, how many signs? Two roads.
Two, you've got two roads. You're gonna need a sign on each of your front yards, okay? So one on East Vacation.
Same.
Pam, we'll give you your instructions.
Okay.
Okay? It's, it's, it lets your neighbors know that you're requesting the six-foot fence.
Okay.
Okay? And the pool in your front yard. And then we'll see you next month. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Thank you so much.
All right, see you next month.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, Appeal three nine zero eight, Saludo, John Saludo and Carolyn Monk. Forty-eight Sandy Pines Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a five-foot sideline variance for an existing one hundred and eighty-eight square foot gazebo, and a five-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed pursuant to Section one ninety-four dash one oh seven B three of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm okay.
Okay, so this is the first time we're seeing your application.
Okay.
So if you don't mind just taking us through...
Well, my understanding was I just needed the variance for the, um, gazebo slash that shed. It's a half gazebo, half shed.
Oh, okay, so it's one structure.
Yeah, it's one structure, right, so one side holds in the pool equipment, the other side is just for sitting. I have a picture if you want.
Yes, please, that would be helpful, because, yep, your survey shows it's two different things.
Do you have another shed on the property?
Um, I do have another shed on the property in the back, and I was told that that was fine when the building inspector came out.
It's only ten feet from the property line, it's supposed to be fifteen feet.
When, um, Rick or Ray Kruznner came out, he never mentioned any of that to me.
He probably couldn't tell, he wouldn't know exactly where your property...
Well, at first he told me that the gazebo shed was fine, um...
Then he realized it was too close.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm a little, I was just, I had assumed that when we got the C of O for the pool that was installed eight years ago, that structure was up. So I assumed everything was included in the C of O at that time.
Oh, no. Yeah, no.
Yeah, but then why wouldn't they have said anything?
I can't, I can't say...
Can the shed be moved?
The shed in the back?
The shed in the back.
Yeah, that can be moved.
Can it, it's just gotta come in five feet?
Five feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, that just takes that out of...
That's nothing, yeah.
I mean, this is a beautiful structure, so...
Thanks, the Amish.
Fact that...
Really, very nice.
That they gave you a C O and everything for the other stuff may help you in your argument.
Can I keep one of these for the file?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Motion to advertise?
Can I keep one for the file, too?
Well, we actually got it in Pennsylvania from the Amish people. They make it right on site, and then they deliver it, yeah.
And you're taking care of it well, if it's gone up eight years ago, so...
Oh, yeah.
Motion advertise. Second?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I will see you next month.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, Appeal three nine zero nine, LMD Homes. LMD Homes is requesting a special permit in, to import an additional three hundred cubic yards of fill with, with regard to the construction of a dwelling located at four seventy Shenandoah Road, Hopewell Junction pursuant to Section one ninety-four point seven five. So, I'm gonna have fun with this one.
Okay.
When we saw you last.
Yes.
You assured us you were not gonna need any other variances or anything, but now you need a special permit, I get it.
Well, I didn't, so, they don't have to get this to build the home.
I understand. It just makes it a, it's a nicer fit for how that, we use the land, and it minimizes disturbance.
Sure. So, so, yeah, I did not know that they were going to need that, and they...
We just have to give it to you, because you assured us there was...
Sure, that's fair, that's fair, and so...
And it's one we can do with a smile and say...
There you go.
You are again, imagine that, so...
I'm back. So, yeah, hopefully this is a, a good special use permit as far as application.
Yeah.
So what, what we're trying to do, we understand there's a three hundred and seventy-five cubic limit on how much we can import.
Right.
And we respect that, and they, the, when it was initially drawn up, they're thinking, okay, we can obtain what, what's needed from the rear of the lot, but it would require clearing the rear of the lot.
By more disturbance, yes.
Yes, and so there's a chance that they can obtain clean fill, and without having to clear that mature growth, they're thinking, if, if it meets the pleasure of the board, that it can benefit the neighborhood. But if, if it doesn't, for whatever reason, they would certainly respect that, and, yeah. So, they're, they're just hoping to, there you go.
Motion to advertise.
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you next month. Uh, do you still have signs?
Uh, I think we're probably gonna need new signs.
Okay, you'll need a few ones. But we just had to have fun with this one.
There you go. Thank you very much.
See you next month. All right, and, last.
Not least.
Yeah, but not least, exactly. Number sixteen, Appeal three nine one, three nine one zero, Bochore?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Richard Bochore's, eighty-eight Stormville Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a fifteen-foot frontline variance for a proposed thirty-foot by thirty-four-foot attached garage, and a forty-seven-foot frontline variance for a pre-existing twenty-six-foot by twenty-two-foot detached garage which was built in nineteen fifty pursuant to Section one ninety-four dash seventeen and one ninety-four dash one twenty-one of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? Can I, I was told to take a picture of the house, can I show you the picture?
Yeah, Pam, do we have this application?
You'd have to do my artwork, like, this, this is the existing house, and this is what we want to do. I want it pretty much to duplicate what's on this side, on this side.
Oh, okay.
That's my artwork, if you...
It's not bad.
No, that, that makes a lot of sense, so...
We can just, just, we can just...
I printed them up, so I figured it...
Okay, good, thanks.
It's basically what you have.
You gotta do a better taping job next time.
All we have is this, there's no application?
They were sending, uh, email.
Yeah, I emailed it, because this was, uh, late in.
Um, you can use mine.
It's not in your package?
What's the issue? Why is it in front of us?
No, because it came in late.
Yeah.
What we're doing is, we, we purchased a house, I guess, to be next to my, my grandkids, uh, who live down a block and around the corner, on Wilmont, but, uh, the house doesn't have a garage, all right? A garage attached to the house.
Well, it has a garage, it's just detached and off, way over on the side.
It's way off, and unfortunately, on a night like tonight, if it's raining and my wife puts a car in the garage, she's gonna have to run to the house.
You have to get another car and go pick her up, man.
So, we, we, we love the house. The house is a farm, a farm, an old farmhouse look. And we really would like to duplicate, I mean, not change that. So we're trying to duplicate what's on the left side of the house. We're trying to make it look on the right side, and make the house more in proportion. Because if you look at the house now, it's got one tall side and one shorter side.
Yeah.
And I, just my own personal preference, I hate garage doors that are in the front of the house. And if it's on the side of the house, like I said, then you, then you don't see it.
The, the only question really issue that I have is you already have two curb cuts. Because you have one for your garage, way off on the corner, on the curve there, and then you've got one for the barn in the back.
I'll get rid of the one for the barn.
Okay, good, just making sure, because I think you, somebody had a conversation with highway. Did you talk with the highway department, so they were okay with this curb cut here? You're gonna have appropriate site distance and everything?
That's not a problem, and...
Okay, I mean, there's no, there's, for an occasional tractor or something needs to get back to the barn, it's fine, but if we can... You really don't want three curb cuts on one property.
And the other garage, I, I keep two antique cars in it, so I really don't go into that garage very often, so...
So there's no benefits to taking that down, actually.
It's a nineteen thirty Buick, it doesn't move very far, and, uh, and an old Mustang, so those are the two cars that are staying in that garage.
They're not gonna protect you in this weather either. Okay.
Motion to advertise?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, we'll see you next month. Pam will give you your instructions for your sign.
Motion to adjourn.
Go ahead. Second?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you, we're pulling teeth here.